Good evening. It's May 18th at 7:30 and we're in the Brainerd City Council Chambers and we'll start our council meeting with roll call. Mayor Waleen?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Morgan Hagan?
Here.
Hillgarth?
Here.
Coe?
Here.
Pritchett?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Sheeler?
Here.
Pledge allegiance, please stand forth.
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America. We are a republic for which it stands. One nation, united in the heavens, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four is approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All same sign, that motion carries. Item number five will be the consent calendar. This is noticed to the public. All matters listed are considered routine by the council and be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time the council votes on a motion adopted by roll call. Looking for a motion.
Move to adopt the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, we'll go with roll call. Johnson?
Yes.
Morgan Hagan?
Yes.
Hillgarth?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Sheeler?
Yes.
That motion carries. Item number six, this will be a presentation. It's the Wellness Committee update, the City of Brainerd Human Resource Coordinator Chris Schubert and Recreation Coordinator Katie Kaufman, and welcome. And you guys want to grab the mic up here?
Don't be nervous with the channel, the news is here taping you.
Lakeland News if you're over there.
I'll introduce myself. I'm Katie Kaufman, Brainerd Parks and Recreation Recreation Specialist.
And I'm Chris Schubert, the HR Coordinator for the City of Brainerd. We're here tonight. Gary Sheeler serves on our City Wellness Committee for our employees. We have a group of, I think there's about 10 employees that serve in that committee, and Gary is our council representative there. He asked us to come in and give you an update about our plan and what we're doing. So I'll let Katie start off with that.
Okay. First, I'd like to fill you in on what our mission is as a committee. The mission is to create, promote, develop, maintain, and motivate healthy lifestyles that will encourage healthy habits that can be incorporated. Some of our goals, I'll just list off a few, which are pretty, you will be able to judge if you complete them or not. They are measurable. So, one of them is reduce the workers' comp costs from 2014 by 30% in the year 2020. By the year 2020. Reduce the number of hours of sick leave used by 5% in 2015 and 10% in 2016 using 2014 data as our benchmark. Have 50% of staff turn in their scorecard, which I'll talk about later, with core requirements fulfilled in 2015, and then 75% in 2016. Host a health fair that is attended by 75% of our staff in 2015. Develop an online toolbox that all employees can access at work or at home to help with all dimensions of wellness by December 31st, 2015. And lastly, develop a wellness calendar by June 1st that has at least one event taking place in each month that supports healthy lifestyle activities or wellness education. Next, I'd like to talk about the scorecard, and it's a new thing that we're implementing or I'd say advancing. We used a scorecard where there was just two requirements. It was a health risk assessment and getting a physical. Now we've developed, kind of going farther into what is wellness, what is health, in the seven dimensions. Seven dimensions of health, of wellness are the physical side, emotional, social, occupational, environmental, spiritual, and intellectual. So on the scorecard, there will be like several different things you can do to score points. And the point system will go something like this. The health fair is this Wednesday. You all are invited, by the way, and it goes from 11:30 to 1:30. But you would, if you were attended the health fair, you would receive 20 points. And what we want to try and do is encourage employees to rack up points with doing healthy things in life. So, like something, example for physical would be go to the gym 15 times in a month, and they would get a certain amount of points. So our idea was that by, we would reward people. So if you scored 100 points, you would get a ticket. And with that ticket, we're hoping with your approval, we would be able to have a drawing at the end of the year, and if you won the drawing, you would get one vacation day. So by...
I'm sorry.
Yes. Todd, don't put me on the spot or anything, but um...
It's the retired guy that came up with that.
Yes. So, I mean, but, and then at the end, okay, so the person who gets the most points, let's say it's a thousand, they would be determined as the wellness champion of that year, and that would be presented then at the year-end presentation that we have, and that'd be something that the HR or myself would present to them. So, that would be a traveling trophy that goes along with that person, so. So that's how that works, and just to reiterate, you guys are all welcome to come to the health fair on Wednesday. It's a city department-wide, so. That was pretty much it, and I guess now, Chris is going to talk about more of the funding behind the wellness committee, so you guys can get an idea of where the money is coming from, how we're going to use it, and more.
First of all, I should also explain, part of the reason how we got Katie hooked into this program is she is actually our current wellness champion for the City of Brainerd. She has done an outstanding job leading us and guiding us through this, and I think Gary would agree. She's been very instrumental in doing very good presentations, giving us information, and we appreciate all your help with that. So, getting back to the funding, we have funds that we receive from National Joint Powers Alliance. It's NJPA, that is the service cooperative that we get our health insurance through. In this group, the co-op actually has $7,500 per year that they give to us, the City of Brainerd, for our wellness program. So we're not using City of Brainerd tax money per se to pay for this. This wellness program has been funded for things such as incentives for employees to go for their annual physical and for their online health assessment. Those are the two core components of our wellness program. In order to get our funding, employees need to participate in that. So that's why they're giving us the money, trying to encourage healthy lifestyles and things like that. We have received these grant funds for two years now. Some things that we've also done are the lunch and learns that we have. We also have our kickball team that we had so much fun with a couple of years ago. Lots of good things that we do with that. It also helps pay for those incentives for employees to participate. So that's really what we have for you. Again, Katie had mentioned that we were hoping to have a grand prize, and we wanted to have something that all employees would feel would be beneficial, and the day of vacation is something that we came up with. So we are hoping that the council would consider approving that. That would be for City of...
I want to maintain a motion.
Any questions? I'll move that as a report for the wellness.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second, and any discussion on that, but I want to thank all the hard work you guys go through, and this is going to be, you know, a big benefit to the city, the awareness for all the employees to be, to help our workers' comp rate, so I think the return should be huge.
We hope so.
I think the council liaison should lead by example and run the next 5K that's available.
Starts in 10 minutes.
Mr. Chair, I would raise a concern about it being possibly a union issue. We start giving an extra day of vacation that we're paying for. Some, you know, we raised so much holy hell because employees might possibly take a few hours on Christmas Eve, and all sorts of extemporaneous things were brought up about it, and I'm wondering if this would be, become some, become something. It wouldn't start that way, nor would it be anybody's intent, but if it would become an obligation. And, and it is cash, it isn't free. It is something that the taxpayers are... So I really, it's nice, it's a feel-good idea, but I'm not certain that, that we should go there for many reasons.
Can we use part of that $7,500 from NJPA's when we pay that vacation?
That's what I wondered.
It's very possible. We need to submit the wellness plan to NJPA and see if they will fund that, but we haven't done that yet for the next coming year.
Could the motion be amended to suggest that, to look into that?
I'm not, that is a secondary.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I, I hope this does become something, because a healthy workforce is a happy workforce, and nothing but good things could come of it.
Well, we have a motion, we have a second, we've had it amended, all in favor of the motion.
We're in favor of the amendment?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. I believe you have to go for the vote on the amendment first, Mr. Chair.
Oh, okay. Yeah, all in favor of the amend...
Aye.
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 They're all slow on that side.
Yeah.
It's still early, guys.
They get done with their meeting so fast that they're...
Okay.
They're not warmed up anymore.
Now we'll go back to the original motion.
Yeah, amended motion.
Amended motion. All in favor of the amended motion?
Aye.
All same sign, that motion carries. Thank you so much, and...
Mr. Chair, if I could take... If I could take just a minute or two of your time, I was asked to give you a brief update on a couple of other things as well. So, one of the things I was asked to give you an update on was our seasonal hiring process. Between today and, I think there's one more person starting in two weeks, we have all of our seasonal employees hired for the city side, excluding parks. Most of their employees start in June. So we have hired two street department labors as, again, seasonal position. Those are mainly our paint crews. We have hired a code compliance person, and he started on Thursday, last Thursday. We have a planning intern that started today, and our engineering aide started on Friday. So those are our seasonal positions that we have. I did want to let you know that we did have a little bit of difficulty in our hiring process year, this year, for individuals that we offered employment to withdrew. They had other seasonal employment or other full-time employment that they took instead. So we had a lot of work that had to be done because of that. The GIS IT person has not been hired yet for the summer. We're still working on that one, reviewing applications, but we'll continue to march forward there. The last thing I wanted to give you an update on is today our Civil Service Commission met to review information for our fire chief hiring process. They have selected eight individuals for the interview. The interviews will be held on May 27th with a backup date of June 4th if needed. We also selected seven panel members to serve on that panel. Our panel members do include two people from the Fire Advisory Board. One is a Baxter representative and one is a township representative. So I am also reviewing right now if those interviews will be open or not. I'm discussing that with Eric to see if that is something that is, will be open or if those will be closed. So, just wanted to give you an update on that.
Thank you so much, Chris. Thank you, Katie. Now we'll move on to the seven. The council committee reports. We'll start out with Mary, Personal and Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first item is the approval of bills, the transfer of funds and payments to contractors, and you'll see we have a payment to one contractor, KLD, survey work on Wright Street, the amount of $1,300. And I would move all three, approval of bills, transfer, and payment.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? This will be roll call. Johnson?
Yes.
Morgan Hagan?
Yep.
Hillgarth?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Sheeler? Yes. Item number two, Mary.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And item number two is a discussion of debt refunding, and the motion is to proceed with the debt service refunding, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion, Mary?
Yes, under brief discussion, Mr. Chair, the bottom line is that the cost of reissuance will be about $89,000, and the potential savings are anticipated to be about $128,000, and that's over a several-year period. And so it looks like in the final analysis, it should be a benefit to the city, and we had a lengthy discussion with Mr. Steinman, and right ahead.
I believe that's not quite correct. I believe the total savings was $120,000 after expenditure.
After the $80,000.
So the 89...
It's a total of 200. It's going to cost about 80. We're going to save about 120.
I thought I said that. $89,000 issuance, $128 savings.
No, it could have been...
Fine. I'm fine with that.
We have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? Well done, Mary.
And then each of the council members were given a copy of that, and you too, Mary.
Mm-hmm. Just right here. Thank you. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
All same sign, that motion carries, item number three.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next one is a request for authorization for out-of-state travel for a police officer. The, that is Officer Ottmans, who wants to go or is...
We have a motion.
Yes. Would be to approve the out-of-state travel request, and the only cost would be his normal wages.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, further discussion, Mary?
That's for drug cart training, so something that's important.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motions, signify by aye.
Aye.
All same sign, that motion carries.
Okay. The next item is a leave of absence request for a paid-on-call firefighter, and one-year leave of absence for Dennis Lohland, and I move that it be approved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? The only thing I noticed was same day, you know, received by the fire department, May 14th, and his quitting day was also May 14th, so I just would always like to see that one week, two-week notice as courtesy.
Good point.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 All same sign, that motion carries.
Item five, the creation of a procurement policy. That's on hold, and I'm hoping everyone will read it over. The first page is what's current, and the rest of it is what's being proposed. I'm speaking with our finance director this morning. She indicated that there were some additional federal requirements that she may need to research a little further, and since she isn't here tonight as well, it seems appropriate to hold it, Mr. Chair. Okay. The next item is the update on the current Tiff District's tax income financing. Of the 16, decertified, 12 have been decertified before the maximum duration. We have 11 active districts, and we have two districts, possibly three, that will be decertifying this year, and this is only for information.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chair. The next item is item seven, and this is an update on our capital improvement proposals. As you know, we had them prioritized, and the phone was number one, and the generator for the police department was number two. We have analysis of, I do have a motion coming. But I'd like...
Person was in the discussion, so...
If I may?
Yes.
The analysis on the phone system is still taking place. The quotes have come in between $45,000 and $50,000. And so they're a little higher than we had anticipated, but hopefully it'll be a systems of service for many, many years to come. So at this point, there's no action on that. It was our number-one priority, but it's definitely coming. The next one, and I so moved that we approve the purchase of a generator for the police department with the low quote of $51,989 from Midwest Generators.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Under discussion, that was our number-two priority, and just for your information, we had $100,000 in the capital budget. There were approximately $24,000 left over from the capital improvement that the park department made. So we rolled that $24,000 into the $100,000, giving us $124,000. So with the phone system coming in, perhaps $50,000 or less, and the generator, we can cover both of those with the money that is in our capital budget. So it's just for your information.
One question, Mary.
Please.
If we award this $51,989, do you know when the installation would start?
I do not, and the chief is here.
The installation, do you know if we award it tonight, would it start right away?
I'd have to ask them what their scheduling is like. I'm assuming we could get it going as soon as possible.
Okay, thanks. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor of the motion, signify by aye.
Aye.
All same sign, that motion carries.
Item eight is the Riverwalk sub-agreement with HRA, and both Jennifer Bergman and Chairman Rick Farrel were at our committee meeting. They put together a proposal to manage the grant. I think they actually did a very good job, and so the committee is recommending approval with two small additions, one being on item three of the initial steps for the Brainerd HRA, and that would be that the committee would be open appointments. In other words, they would make certain that the public was aware that there were committee openings and would be invited to send in their application or their intent or whatever. And the second one was to include somewhere, and identify, somewhere perhaps for the coordinator, to identify environmental issues early on and consider options and alternatives. And with that, I would move approval of the agreement with HRA.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? I want to thank everybody that was involved. It's a very good, I mean, when you have this many people happy with it, it was done very well. So, with that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, that motion carries.
Thank you. Item nine, update on the city administrator search, and I believe, Mr. Chair, you want to take that up, so there is nothing from us on that. A summary of the Special Personnel Finance Committee workshop, information only, Mr. Chair. It was an excellent workshop with just tremendous amount of work by Chris and Connie and overseen by our administrator, Patrick. It was, I think, very eye-opening and a great deal of detail in it. It certainly lays the groundwork for our next meeting, which we hope to have in September. I think we have a lot of work to do. Clearly, it's been changed by piecemeal over the years, a piece here, an addition there, subtraction somewhere else, without a total overview of the entire thing. And that's what we're trying to do, and also certainly parts of it will be used for negotiations when they come up again in '16. So that's informational. We have not set a date for our next meeting on that, but we anticipate the first or second week of September, and that completes our review.
And I'll jump right on to item number nine here.
Because I think you want to grab the, that's what he was saying for.
Yeah.
He was, didn't he tell you that's what he was saying for?
Yes.
Yeah. Somebody want to grab the camera guy, you tell him to come back.
We're done with nine. We're done with that.
No, we haven't.
We have a request to revisit it?
You just heard it to the chair.
Oh, to the chair. I thought you just went through it.
No, I haven't done anything with number nine yet.
Oh.
It's not going to go that easy. Item number nine is an update on the city administrator's search. Has everybody heard? You know, we had one of our candidates back out, so we're down to one candidate. My personal view is I always, just hate taking somebody on a forfeiture. And second of all, you know, there's an old saying, you know, in the hiring and firing world, you know, quick to fire but slow to hire, and that's how I feel about this process. So...
It was quick, though.
But with that, I don't know which way the council wants to go tonight. Do they want to take the applicant that was left because of somebody backing out, and/or does the council want to go in? I'm ready, Dean.
Yeah, I just don't like the way this is being framed. I think even if we go to Patrick, it's not somebody backing out. I mean, it was an eight-five vote. I voted for Mark.
Eight-three.
And, or eight-three, I'm sorry.
Five-three.
It was five-three.
Yeah.
I voted for Mark, and I think as long as the process, when you look at the paperwork of the candidates that they gave us, we made our choice which were the top ones. We interviewed those people, we picked our top two, we interviewed those people, you know, I would not have a problem with discussing what the terms of the contract would be with Patrick and moving on from there.
Is that a motion?
I so move.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? On that discussion, I'm going to vote no, but I appreciate that we're moving forward, and even though I vote no, does not mean I won't work really, really hard with the new city administrator that passes. I mean, I'll give you 100% of me, does not mean, you know, the motion...
He might not want 100% of you.
But I'll give it to him anyway, so...
Scare him away.
With that, we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Same sign, polls, aye. And with that, I want to thank, you know, the new city administrator that's going to be aboard, and...
Six to one?
Six to one.
Mr. Chair, what are your thoughts on putting together a contract? I believe our attorney has advised that we may, in fact, put together a contract that would be more satisfactory to the council and as versus just going with the proposal right now in personnel policy, which I think some of us do not like. What is your thought on that?
Can I have the city administrator jump in and bail me out?
Okay.
If I may.
When you hired Springstead several years back, and this is under their guaranteed work, they had, in the part of that stipulated that they would help you with that contract negotiation. Now, the contract itself was one I believe that she either took from somewhere that she had used before, but you can use whatever she wanted. She and I had talked about that. She was principally being, it was just recently adopted, using that as a basic format to go forward, and then working with the council president like had been done when it was Bonnie, but then Bonnie's passing, you know, circumvented that history. If you're okay with that, that's what she has done in the past and would be more than willing to do that again.
What I would like to be certain is that any council person who has some thoughts on that contract would be able to forward those and have them considered.
Forward them to Patrick, though.
Well, actually, to Sharon, directly to Sharon.
Oh, Sharon.
She hasn't been contact communicating with her on the questions.
Just so we all know where to send them.
Chris, are you, is our HR coordinator and attorney, but, I mean, the idea was that you guys have been coordinating with Sharon on the different questions, so you've got a working relationship with her on that, and so rather than getting me involved in this late in this process.
I think that's...
Just a question, if she, in the process, is she going to float those possible additions in front of the council before she puts them into the contract? Because there's going to have to be some sort of discussion or some sort of consensus.
Consensus.
Okay. Yes. The theory was you have a contract already, and then, unless there's some substantial changes, but she's going to work with Gary and Chris on that to make sure that they follow the process. I think part of the, I mean, the, what do you, the 800-pound gorilla in the room or elephant that you like to talk about, is, are they going to follow the step process? Are they going to follow their own separate issue, and, you know, if you want to give direction on that tonight, that might be important, but right now, we have a step process in place, administrative, what's it called?
Salary Administration Plan.
Salary Administration Plan, if you couldn't hear it at home there, but that's an 85% to 100% plan. There's been some discussion about not following that, so maybe you want to talk about that element now.
Can I have her just come up to the mic?
It's your show.
Yeah, please. You know, so I can ask the question, I guess, you know, what step would you start in this one, so we know what step process? Is A, B, C, D? So the public understands, and I understand.
I can't really answer that question for you. It's something that Sharon is negotiating with the candidate. So it depends on, I don't know what she currently is negotiating with the candidate as far as a wage, unless Patrick knows.
Nothing's been negotiated. She didn't have an idea who the candidate was going to be.
Right. So normally, a starting wage starts at 85%, which is step A. However, the council can go up to step B or C. B is 90%. C is 95% of what the base salary is for the city administrator position. Right now, it's at $113,000 is what our base is. So that percentage of that is something that she would be negotiating.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
The candidate who we have just voted on, salary is considerably below our starting salary, and I think at a minimum, we ought to discuss if we want to go that high. I, my own personal feeling is that there should be a year that that person gets his feet wet, so to speak, to see how, what he thinks about working for this council, and to see what the council thinks about working with him. I think that should be a year's process, and I think there ought to be a salary for that year. I think there should be no steps, no cost of living. It should be a one-year contract. At the end of that year, everything comes into play, but to me, that would be clear and understandable. But to me, that would be clear and understandable, clearly benefits and such, I understand that. But I'm talking all the steps and all this gobbledygook. So, but I, just quickly, Dave, I think it would be foolish if we don't look at his current salary and do we want to go that high? If we went to step one, you're looking at over a $20,000 increase to that individual. Do we want to do that? Or do we want to start somewhere else, somewhere else, and then work from there? And those are valid questions.
Yeah, Dave, jump in.
I just want to make sure that we're not doing our negotiating at an open meeting that's on television, that's going to be online.
Okay.
But I think if I can...
Yes, please.
The steps for the position, the whole salary administration plan is based upon your pay equity study. So, the administrative position's currently in that. You can go around or within those numbers. But the fact is, if you vary from that, you've now altered your pay equity plan. Correct me if I'm wrong with any part of that.
Correct.
And so, in theory, we've told the state that our pay equity plan starts at 85%. And we posted that, we published it, and everybody is aware of what our starting salary was and what the top of the salary was. So, I'm not disagreeing with you, Ms. Cope, because the city attorney and our consultant will tell you that you have every right to do your salary within that range.
I always think the administrator is a very, it's a very unique position. We all know that. And I think that should be considered, not as in the rank and file, but in a separate way.
We've got one down here. Sue?
No, I appreciate that Patrick brought up the pay equity, because that is a factor that we weren't thinking about. And so, we should be very careful in not starting below the pay equity, because I think Minnesota statute dictates that we are in accordance with pay equity.
You can't advertise a job at one and then say, here you go.
Yeah, and so, but we could certainly negotiate within the contract the progression of steps, so that there was a delay in the progression of steps, that was not an automatic progression from A to B to C to D within a short timeframe, and that there could be a longer period, a longer orientation or probationary period before the advancement to the next step, without violating the pay equity.
Eighty-five percent would be $96,050.
Right.
So, that's the direction the council would like to start out with, but go ahead, Patrick.
One other comment, and as long as we're conducting our business in the newspaper, there was discussion about the probationary period. The charter supersedes probationary period, and the charter stipulates for the administrator a different process. So, and I won't go into detail about that. So, I guess I didn't want to confuse the public that there's a probationary period. There's a review process, but there's not a probationary period.
But the review process could serve the same purpose.
Yes, ma'am.
So, you know, it's what's, what term. But the bottom line is we're to be in touch with Sharon? Is that the bottom line?
Yes. Gary and Sharon will work together and keep you updated.
Okay. Good enough.
Thank you.
That Sharon was thinking that there might be an agreement, then a special meeting to confirm that before June 1st?
We may need to do that.
I'm just, okay.
I'm okay, whatever we need to do.
Is Sharon going to be in town, in state, anytime soon?
Constantly, yeah. She had her two vacations, so she's done.
Oh, okay.
We were in communication three times today, so...
Kelly, you have anything to add?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you. You want to start out with, Dean, Safety and Public Works Committee report, item number one?
We're done. We did it in between all that monkey business.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number one, the motion is to approve staff's recommendation and adopt a draft resolution authorizing the purchase of a Class 500 transit bus from North Central Bus in the approximate amount of $138,046 in ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion, Mr. Evans?
Mr. Chair, just to go on record, this is the one that we, I believe we actually did this a while ago, but now we're actually going to implement the purchase. It did come up that we would really, oh, on the second part, we'd really like to see what they, when we go to sell the other one, what they sell for. That's not this motion, my apologies.
This will be roll call. Johnson?
Yep.
Porcanagan?
Yes.
Hillgarth?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Sheeler?
Yes.
Item number two, Mr. Evans.
Thank you. Item number two, the motion is to accept staff's request to dispose of the 2004 Fast Three bus by sealed bids, with the bids being returnable by 12 noon on Friday, May 29th, and then to notify the council of the winning bid amount in ISO move.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All same sign, that motion carries. Item number three.
Item number three is to save route to school, a tap transportation alternatives program funding for the fiscal year 2019. We have been awarded $280,000 in federal funds to construct the project. The local share will be approximately 25% or about $93,000 plus engineering costs of roughly $70,000. As the project begins to develop, staff will present options for funding of the city portion of the project cost, and that is purely informational at this point.
Thank you.
Item number five or four is improvement 1306, 28th Street Construction Award of Bids. The motion is to award the bid to, and I apologize, I got to find it here, Board and Excavating of Brainerd, Minnesota for $487,704 in ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion on that?
Mr. Chair, just to notice, it was good to see that we did get a number of bids on this project, and the winning bid is under engineers' estimate.
Engineers did a good job.
As usual.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is this going to be roll call?
Nope.
Yep. Johnson?
Yes.
Porcanagan?
Yep.
Hillgarth?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Sheeler?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number five, also on improvement 1306, 28th Street Reconstruction. Regarding material testing proposal, the motion is to accept staff's recommendation and adopt a motion to accept the proposal from Braun Intertech to perform the requested services in the estimated amount of $6,204 in ISO move.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signified by aye?
Aye.
All same sign, that motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number six is improvement 0501, College Drive Reconstruction. It's an oldie but a goodie, so we thought we'd bring it back. The motion is to approve change order number four. It's under landscaping, but it's actually fencing material, and the change order reduces the amount of, reduces the project cost by the amount of $2,418.25 for fencing material that was substantive in ISO.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, actually, we don't get a credit back. I was surprised to hear that this project is actually not closed out because of the warranty period on what's called landscaping materials, now being two years by the state of Minnesota. We actually still have retainage on this project in excess of this amount. So, that retainage just gets reduced. What we still have to pay the contractor, which actually comes due, come up soon, comes due soon, we just reduce that, what we paid him by this amount.
Thank you for the explanation. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, signified by aye?
Aye.
All same sign, that motion carries. Item number seven.
Item number seven, thank you, Mr. Chair, is improvement 1502. It's part of the 2016 Seal Code Program. The motion is to accept staff's recommendation and participate in Baxter's share of the county's chip seal contract, to chip seal that portion of Fairview Road that's located within the city of Brainerd in ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion, Mr. Evans?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is that little frontage road just in front of Burger King on the north side of Highway 210, and a portion of that is still in Brainerd and a portion of it in Baxter. It's come up on Baxter's chip seal program to go through that. Well, and they're using a contractor that's different than the one we're using. So, this doesn't actually really add to the amount we've got budgeted of, expected cost should be around $1,543. And what, so what we'll do is we'll just take some of the money that we have budgeted for our program and pay, reimburse the city of Baxter so they can pay their contract. So, that's how this works. So, because we have a different contractor who's scheduled to do our chip sealing for 2015.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by aye?
Aye.
All same sign, that motion carries. Item number eight.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number eight is improvement number 14-9, the Delwood Drive Assessment Methodology. The motion is to approve staff's recommendation on the alternative of assessing per front foot assessment in ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion, Mr. Evans?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This should be, after deducting roughly $75,000 for the local, the L-RIP program, and including adding in engineering fees, our total portion of the cost of the project will be about roughly $30,000. We, our assessment policy is to assess a half, so it'll be close to $15,000. Comes out to about $12 a foot, Mr. Engineer, I believe. You have about $12 a foot, a significant bargain, so to speak, under what our neighbors to the west do, but probably not as good a deal as the county, which doesn't assess at all. But it follows our assessment policy to a T.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion?
One more FYI. There was some question, as you recall, the engineer discussed the alignment of the road in the center of the road right of way, not being in the center of the road. We really won't be able to answer any of those questions until we get some drawings from the county as to where, because the road's going to be widened a little bit, is planned to be widened a little bit. And so, we don't exactly know where that would be, but expectations are, the county is planning to overlay and widen right over the road that's there, not necessarily following a line on a map. So, you know, if it's going to be so many feet wider, it'll be so many feet on each side.
Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by aye?
Aye.
All same sign, that motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And our final, oh, not our final item, save the best for last. Next to the last is item number nine, improvement, also improvement 1408. This is 13th Street. The motion is to accept staff's recommendation and adopt a motion to recommend to the county to proceed with the project development as originally proposed with two driving lanes, two parking lanes, and no bicycle lanes in ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion, Mr. Evans?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Simply, it's, you know, as much as we love bike lanes, and I mean that all seriously, if we were redoing the whole street, digging it down to dirt, where we could remove the crown and not have the excess expense of what it would take to have to redo the street where we're only planning a substantive overlay, it just doesn't make financial sense.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by aye?
Aye.
All same sign, that motion carries.
Item number 10 is the good news on garage sale signs. Mr. Osgard, you want to share it with us?
I sure can, Mr. Community Chairman. I've identified a couple, I have a couple of pictures that show you, like garage sale signs at some corners in the community, and I wanted to remind the council that this type of advertisement for garage sales is illegal in our community. And because of that, unless there's a hue and cry for something different, it would be the planning department's intent to let the public know that they are illegal, and if they show up on street corners and not as they're allowed to be by the zoning ordinance, the garage sale signs will be removed and brought to City Hall and disposed of. This is just informational item, unless there's a hue and cry from the council not to do this, that's, this is our plan.
I personally want to thank you for continuing doing this. I get a lot of calls in the corner of, you know, Mill Avenue and 210, where they just stuff them in. And even the people that are, you know, business people at the mall get, you know, bothered by all the advertising that's out front. So, I appreciate it.
By the way, we'll work with the newspaper to do a press release or an article as well.
Yes, because a lot of the businesses don't like other people's signs in front.
Mr. Chair, I have mixed emotions on it. I know there are some times it's really as inappropriate as our chairman identified, but there are many times where it's just homes and residences, and you have to wonder how big the problem is in the overall realm of things. And the other thing, you say you're going to pick them up, but a lot of them are just there on the weekend. And as long as people take them away when their garage sale is over, first of all, I don't think you're suggesting that the city have its staff out on the weekend running around looking for garage sale signs. I hope not, anyway. And if they're taken down, there's one almost every weekend on the corner of Fifth and Oak Street, and almost every weekend on the corner of Sixth and Oak Street, garage sale, garage sale. And they have the arrows pointing them on. You know, who's it really? If they take them down Monday, are we going to have city staff or police out running around?
I'm going to, I would say yes, because if you are in the mowing business this summer, and you got all those signs out there with wires, and they, they're bent over and all over, they're a hazard to the mower. You got to get off the mower to clean them up and stack them around. There is expense into having them up. I was on the corner of 18 and 25, and there was how many times we ran into those signs that were laying in the grass or stakes that were still in the ground, and you would hit them with the mower, you know, because people, and then they wouldn't come back and pick them up. So, every week I had to do all the cleanup. So, yeah, if people were responsible, but I, I mean, there's just, why can't we once just say, this is the ordinance, and stick with it without, you know, always having all this caveat that, you know, maybe, you know, I mean, either it's a policy or not a policy.
I'm just trying to say, in the overall realm of things, and making the city a friendly place to be isn't really that important. If they were there all, never taken down, but the ones I'm referring to, they're taken down. I've never seen them there Monday.
It's similar to the, similar to the campaign signs.
And the two-wheeled garbage carts.
Yes, so...
And the buckthorn in the park.
In the books.
And if you start throwing leniency in there, then it throws the whole thing right out, so...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Osgard has assured me, you've got a chance to meet our new planning intern, that he will work 24/7 on this problem.
Thank you.
I hope not.
You'll get a chance to meet him. He is gung ho on this whole garage sale issue.
Four years of college.
Tax money at work. Wow.
Important.
It is.
Item number eight, unfinished business, A, public hearing. This will be a public hearing. We'll have the public hearing at 8:17. This will be for the final reading of a proposed ordinance number 1437, an ordinance amending City Code Section 1010.01 regarding license fee for transit food units approval of. And the public hearing is now open. Anybody up here or out there that want to speak, please come up to the mic, state your name and address.
82.
We'll go once, we're gonna go twice, three times. We now will close the public hearing at eight seventeen and a half, and it will be open to, for council. We have a final reading, council.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I, I move to hold the final reading of proposed ordinance number one four three seven.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of the motion?
Do we have discussion?
Nope, there's discussion. I'm ready for discussion. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, okay. Same sign, polls. Nobody is opposing, so we'll move on to, Mr. Evans, you wanna start it off with a adoption?
Oh, yes. Mr. Chair, I move to adopt ordinance number one four three seven.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Otherwise this will be roll call.
Johnson?
Yeah.
Morgan-Agden?
Yep.
Hillgarde?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Sheeler?
Yes.
I missed who seconded that, I'm sorry. Kelly, set, motion, who seconded?
I thought Mrs. Coke did.
No, I didn't.
Adoption.
Did you have who seconded? I didn't catch who seconded it, that's sort of.
I thought it came from down there.
Yeah, I did catch it.
I'll tell you about it.
Gabe, you were.
I hear it's a ventriloquist, he can throw his voice in them.
Yeah, because you hesitated, and then you went with it.
You didn't like it too, excuse me.
Eight B. A call for applicants, this is the mayor's highlight.
I'm not touching it.
Oh, okay. Application information, we have a cable TV advisory committee, two terms expire on twelve thirty-one twenty sixteen and twelve thirty-one twenty seventeen, the charter commission, two terms expire on twelve thirty-one twenty eighteen. HRA, two terms expire on six six twenty twenty. Rental dwelling board of appeals, one tenant and one general public representative, terms expire twelve thirty-one twenty sixteen. Please sign up, there's a lot of people in the audience, you know, jump right up and take care of it.
I fear if they didn't listen to me, maybe they listened to you.
So we're gonna jump on to item number nine, new business. This will be a first reading, proposed ordinance number fourteen thirty-eight, requirements for residential composting. And Mark, you wanna lead us off on that?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, I can. Um, over the past few years, when our, um, co-compliance officers have gone out in the community, they've come across instances where in pro- in the property owners or rental property owner, or rental properties as well, in the yards, uh, there'll be, um, mounds of grass clippings, or leaves, or piles of brush, um, that are, that have been sitting there for quite a long time, because the, the grass has grown up around them. And when the compliance officer asks them what it is, they say, well, that's my compost pile. Um, and we have no mechanism to, uh, specify what composting is in our, uh, city ordinance. Therefore, a pile that has shown up in a backyard, um, we have, we have nothing, we have no ability to regulate. So what this ordinance is intended to do is to provide some, uh, guidance for our community, that, for example, the pictures that I showed you, if those are truly gonna be compost areas, then they need to be confined into a compost, uh, container of some kind, of their own making, to separate it from just being a, a pile of, uh, of nuisance that could harbor rodents and, um, be attractive nuisance for children, whatever. Um, so that's what this ordinance is doing, is, uh, providing, uh, some requirements for that, by specifying, um, that there has to be a container of at least three sides, having it set back from the property line. Um, let's see, what else is there? Defining what compost is, because we might get into an argument about whether or not it's compost or not. Let's see what else we have here. Gets into, uh, I talked about location on the property, what, what can go into composting. Two things I did not include, um, which we can if the council desires, um, we do have some information about maximum size compost contain- areas. Um, and number two, uh, we did not specify a distance from an adjoining property residence. Uh, we just specified from the property line. If composting is done properly, it does not smell. If, uh, so hopefully that wouldn't be a problem with adjoining properties, but, um, one of the things that could end up happening, a very common type of, uh, compost area, uh, containers using pallets. People will take pallets from, uh, shipping, from, for shipping materials and create a pallet container. So if this is passed, that's a, that could be one type of, uh, compost bin that could be created in our neighborhood, so. But I think we need something to help our co-compliance officers out, and I think this does that.
Thank you, Mark, and I totally agree with you, because I know that that was an issue with Laura and Nate, you know, uh, when they get out there, you know, they call it a compost pile, and they're just dumping leaves in the grass in the middle of the yard. So, yeah, I know you have to define it. Most people put it in a ring of some sort, chicken wire, hog wire or something, and, um, you know, confine it to an area, and it needs to do that anyway to make it compost. Just putting it on a pile, dries it out and just blows around, so.
Good point, yep.
I'll move the first reading.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Hold same sign, that motion carries. Thank you, Mark.
I don't think, no, we have to have another.
Yeah, we're gonna have another one. So that'll move us right to public forum. Time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of the council, time limits may be appalled, it's, um, eight twenty-five. Uh, does anybody in the audience wanna come up and, Mike?
Do they need signatures?
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 Mike, do you need a signature?
Do we have anybody that needs signatures?
Are you here for a government?
High school student, I'm making a reference to.
Well, we'll close the public forum. Um, we'll go to item number eleven, staff reports, the written reports, verbal, any updates since the pact had? Go ahead, Mr.?
Hand out for you? I'll wait till it's all been handed out and walk through it. But I will remind the council, back on April sixth of this year, you passed a new policy that says, that's identified that council will be notified of the intent to apply for any grant over five thousand dollars. And our, we apologize for the lateness of this, but our interim fire chief notified me today and asked about the process, and they are applying for a ten thousand dollar grant.
The purposes?
Well, they've identified, uh, wild land personnel protective gear, hose nozzles, other water movement items, and radios and pagers. I can tell you with my conversations with the interim chief, um, in his opinion, we are, we have half the pagers and radios that we need.
One of the questions I had, Patrick, on this?
Yes, sir.
It says, it provides financial and technical assistance to the Minnesota Fire Department in cities or communities with a population under ten thousand, and we're over ten thousand. I was just wondering, are we on the bubble as far as getting it thrown out?
I can't tell you that, I didn't ask that question. I got it, and it was in between three meetings today.
Okay.
Okay.
Another question, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Uh, and it's probably in here, but we just got. Is there a match?
Yes.
We, fifty fifty.
Yep, there's a fifty fifty match.
Yeah.
Paragraph three.
And that would be a capital improvement, uh, so we'd have to see what they've gotten their capital improvement.
They're looking at ten thousand dollars here. Before we accepted it, it would, uh, ultimately be approved by the council, but there's a lot of questions in there, so. Appreciate the questions, I will follow up on that and get response back.
Okay.
So what you're just looking forward is continuing to moving forward with a motion?
All we have to have is notification of the city council. No action required.
Okay.
That works. But I appreciate the questions, and we will get back, we will respond to them.
Mark, you got a question?
Got a question, uh, something to inform the council.
I'm ready.
Um, in the audience tonight is Philip Haugen. Philip, if you'd raise your hand. Philip is the, um, today is Philip's first day as the planning department intern.
Come on up.
Why not? Oh, okay.
Yeah, give a shout of the camera.
It's his first day, give him a break.
Let us know your thoughts on garage.
The people on TV wanna see who they're gonna deal with.
And food trucks.
Yeah, my name is, uh, Philip Haugen, so, uh, I'm a, uh, first-year graduate student for Maikato, MSU, so.
What was that? I, I had a hard hearing, I didn't hear what you said.
MSU of Maikato.
Welcome.
Well, go Mustangs. Are you, you're living in the, in the area then?
Yes, yes, yes. I'm living by the campus, so.
Okay, okay, got it.
We expect great things.
I know.
I can't wait for the weekends, where my, my weekends are now taking downsides.
Usually, no, we ask for your cellphone. You didn't want your cellphone number, everybody, no, I'm just. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Any other staff reports? Do you have any more, Patrick?
I don't think so.
Okay. We'll move on to item number twelve, council president, mayor, and council other committees. Mayor, you wanna start off?
Yeah, a little bit. Uh, aside from my written report, just remind people not only do we have that open house that we're gonna be adjourning to, but also Memorial Day is next Monday, and, uh, it's a day of remembrance of all those that have given their lives, and, uh, they have an absolutely fantastic, uh, program at Evergreen Cemetery, so. Have, have everyone attend that again.
Thank you. Um, you know, and I don't know, I'm gonna probably bring it up now, uh, we had a meeting again with the city of Baxter over the last, and we're kinda at a standstill, and I'll let Patrick jump in anytime, but we need, um, go one step further and to get the interpretation of, basically, the language, and the confusion is the, the fees and interest over eight million dollars, and it has been a hiccup, and it's been a hangup on both sides, and we just wanna go one more step. We asked the city of Baxter if they wanna go into mediation, and they said no, and then Patrick kinda asked if we can give, and maybe you can explain where you're gonna go, but go to the state of Minnesota and ask for an interpretation.
Sure, I think, and when we say the city of Baxter, there's, if you recall back a couple, several months ago, uh, the city council authorized a committee of the, uh, Gary, the mayor, finance director, and the city administrator to meet with representatives from the city of Baxter. So it hasn't been a formal process at any city council meeting at the point in time. And we're, we're hamming out the details, and, uh, as Mr. Sheeler identified, there is, uh, question on the language, and there is an individual at the state who is responsible, uh, who's an employee of the House of Representatives, that interprets language as it's written, and we are gonna seek that individual's, um, official opinion.
Someone who can read.
Well, uh, but, but the most important part of that is he's the official interpreter of languages. We all know it's written by attorneys and the whole process. Getting comments back, and then we will share that with the city of Baxter, but because today is the last day of the legislature, he's been kinda busy. So we're gonna wait a little bit and, and get hold of him, and share it with everyone when we get it.
The hiccup is, it's about a hundred thousand dollars a year interest, at what Baxter has proposed to us, they wanna give us the eight million dollars over twenty years. So it would cost the city of Brainerd two million dollars to get that eight million. When we went through the negotiations last summer with the legislators in Baxter to get the last, nothing was ever mentioned, what if you don't get the check right away? And had we gone through the bonding bill, we'd have got a check right away, and you wouldn't have been talking about interest, you wouldn't have been talking about any fees. But when Baxter took this eight million over, um, there is gonna be some interest and some fees if they pay us in a ten-year period, twenty-year period, or a thirty-year period. And the hiccup is, you know, over twenty years is gonna cost two million dollars. Now, the other question that Patrick asked is that they could do the issuance of this bond, and that was part of, in the language.
The state.
Go ahead.
Yeah, the state statute is very specific that, um, what was passed was, did allow the city of Baxter to issue the debt, uh, for this specific project. Normally, that is not, uh, what happens, right? Like ninety-nine point nine-nine percent of all their bonding issuance, the city that the project is going on is, issues the debt. But in this case, legislation specifically allowed them to issue the debt for this project as identified to the airport utility extension, and we said that they didn't want to, um, pay, we'd be more than happy just to have them issue the debt. We thought that that was our, what they were, references, you know, our part in the, the process.
We carry one more step. I don't think we're gonna get any more meetings out of Baxter on this issue. Um, the last meeting was really, very, very, very hard to get, but, uh, they're pretty adamant, we're on their stance, so we as a city have to take the next step, and, you know, with legal counsel and Patrick moving forward, we're gonna continue moving forward. You know, and I'm trying to do it without a lot of animosity, but yet, you know, there's some unanswered questions. We should have just got the eight million dollars, and we wouldn't have to be addressing the, the cost of administrative fees and the interest afterwards. And, uh, all of these are very, very important issues that we gotta address, and the mayor's been part of it, and I've been part of it, and we'll see where we can continue to go, and we'll keep you abreast on it, you know, and hopefully, you know, the two sides can come together with some kind of an agreement.
I think, if I may, Mr. President, once we get an answer from that individual, I think that'll give us a good direction as to where we go from there.
Okay. So I just wanna update, and Patrick already did, you know, and maybe on June first, we'll have some more to bring up. With that, we'll go to item number thirteen.
Oh, wait, I've got a committee report. You're not the only one on this council, you know, okay? I've got a couple of committees.
You could have done it without SAS, I'm sorry.
Okay, um, I wanted to, I just briefly identify that Sue and I, as your council reps on the IT committee, uh, met, uh, what, a week ago or whenever, uh, recently, uh, on the IT issues, and, uh, had a number of department heads there, as well as Sean. I think we had a very good discussion. I think it's very clear that we do need, as a city, to put IT at a, a pretty high priority. And that's one of the thing that, as we begin to move into budget, that I think we have some very, uh, choices we have to make. And, uh, I am convinced that IT properly done will save money in the long run. But I think there are so many issues in, with IT, that there's a need to prioritize. Now, both Sue and I did our best to get our, uh, department heads and people who were there to identify a priority, and of course, each one of them thought that what they wanted was a priority. And so therein lies the, the, uh, challenge. Uh, and so I do think that there will have to be, uh, some way of prioritizing and looking at what we do, because there's no question that we need, we need to move ahead and make a certain portion of it a part of department budgets. Now, right now, it is not. We have an IT budget. Um, and I think that's a good way of doing it, and but somehow it'll have to, in my view, be identified, uh, in each department budget as, um, their need for IT and how that will fit into their budget. Uh, I don't see any other way, um, accountability to do that. But I thought it was a good meeting, and, uh, this city is a long way to go in IT, and we need to move forward, and we'll have more meetings, and I have no doubt that, uh, we won't always all agree, but hopefully we can come to a consensus and include a good piece for, uh, for updating IT in our next budget. And the next thing I wanna report to you is, uh, at our June first meeting, our showcase Brainerd, will be representatives of History Week. History Week is coming up fast, the fourteenth through the twenty-first. There will be repeats of some of the favorites, such as the tours at Northern Pacific. Um, but there will be some new things, and, uh, they're, they're very exciting, and they're going to be very good. The tour of the north side, and the tour then of the cemetery. Uh, those will fit together, and I'll be brief, Mr. Chair, but I'm trying to peak the public.
I didn't say a word, it's a second SAS, I mean. I was just running down.
The cemetery tour will be led by John Van Essen, who did it last year, and he's just a master at this. And this year, there will be a focus on the graves of the people whose, whose home, of the homes that were originally built by these people. So let's say that Mr. White was instrumental in the building of one of the homes on the north side that will be part of the home tour, and he is buried in the Evergreen Cemetery. The focus for the cemetery tour will be on those graves and the history of those people. So all in all, that should be an extremely interesting, uh, day. Another addition, and, uh, Mike Higgins is right here, will be on Thursday, with a lot of activity taking place out at Brainerd Industrial. And our committee is just so grateful to Mike for coming forward and offering. He has a few things he's still working out. But among the things that will happen in the evening will be a kind of, called a Paul Bunyan event, and apparently they've been held around the, uh, the state, and particularly the area, and I'm not really certain what they are, but Jeremy Jackson is leading that one. And, uh, I understand that it's historical and interesting, and there'll be slides and presentations, and, and, uh, all that good stuff. So that's brand new this year. We'll again have the children's parade in downtown Brainerd on Wednesday. We'll have, uh, hopefully a puppet show in the afternoon for the children. Um, let's see, what else? Monday will be Veterans Day. The entire Monday will be dedicated to programs for our veterans, and in the evening, there'll be a presentation out at CLC that deals with the Vietnam War. Friday, we are once again having a day with our Native American neighbors. And we have been working with representatives of the M'Lax Band this year. They plan to send a color guard for the Veterans Day, so they would have a Native American color guard, uh, as part of the other color guards for, for that day. And additionally, on Friday, there will be, uh, open sessions at CLC to discuss, uh, tribal government, how it varies from old United States government. Uh, there will be discussion with the elders on some of the, uh, issues that they deal with. Uh, just an opportunity to interact with our Native American neighbors, so I think it's going to be excellent. Saturday, Kids Day again at Gregory Park, and the youth as re- as resources are also helping this year and want to have some booths and art shows and things out there. And Sunday will be the non-denominational service again, once again, the pastor of the congregational church has agreed to head that up. And so that will complete the week, which will begin on Sunday, the 14th, so it's an extra day with the tours at Northern Pacific, and providing Gabe Johnson gets this done, a car show as well, so it's all rests on Gabe for the car show, but it's going to be a wonderful.
No pressure.
No pressure. It's going to be a wonderful week. It's for everyone. I don't think anything, I'm not even certain about the industrial center, but if there are some charges out there, if you do have a barbecue, that may be, I don't know that. Other than that, everything is open to the public, no charge, just come, be part of it, enjoy, be proud of our city, we'll be putting together a program. And so the Daughters of the American Revolution have come forward this year, and they're participating in some of the events. So this is growing. People are hearing about it, they're wanting to participate, and I want our own council to be a proud and part of it, Mr. Chair, so thank you.
Thank you.
One quick question, Mr. Chair. Any word on the Chicken Dance?
Well, it's kind of come and gone and come and gone, and I wish I could tell you more, because I was looking forward to leading it, and. I was.
I know it. See, I know you had your costume ready and everything.
More so than the beard-growing contest.
You do it every two weeks, you have to come, so you don't need to do it.
Mike might have the space for 100,000 people to do that.
Mike and I have talked about that, and it won't work out there, so.
Don't give up.
The floor is too uneven.
You guys leave the Chicken Dance?
No, what day is it?
Thursday.
What day? No, I mean, do we need to adjourn to that?
Yeah.
That's why I just was wondering.
I thought it was May 27th at 5:00.
Okay, what day is it?
Right there.
For the, um.
Okay, yeah. So, you know, item number 13, we're going to adjourn to the airport utility extension, open house to be held on Thursday, May 21st, 2015.
That's what I'm saying.
I'm just waiting for the mayor to finish up here.
At Thursday?
Yeah, 5:30 to 7:30 at the Brainerd Lakes Regional Airport, everybody's in 10. And then the next one we'll adjourn to is Retirement Party for Patrick Wusso, Thursday, May 28th, at between 3:00 and 4:00, City Hall Council Chambers, presentation by the mayor at 3:30.
The move.
...